We'll just give it another couple of minutes for our members to call in.
Zoom and everything, turn it down and get into you.
All right, Lucy's in.
Oh, Lucy, you're in.
I'm in. Oh.
Mark just said you were in.
Hi.
So nice to hear your voice, Lucy.
All right, I'm hanging up on the phone, Lucy.
Okay.
Just gonna do a quick rundown of the members who are on the call. And then we'll do a roll call. We're still waiting on a couple of members who confirmed but are not currently on the call. I know Bill Bruce was having a little bit of a technical difficulty. Barbara Morrow was with us on, oh, there she is.
I'm here. I never left.
All right, we need one more and then we have a quorum.
Is Lucy here?
Lucy is here. Oh, we have a couple. Joining the meeting. Welcome, folks. I'll just proceed with the roll call now that I believe we have a quorum. From Albany County, Mike Apostol. Bill Bruce. And as a, as a note, everyone who joined the meeting, join muted. So if I call your name, just remember to unmute yourself. Lucy McKnight. Larry Schillinger. Kristen Swinton.
I'm here.
Rensselaer County. Judy Bressler is here. James Shaughnessy is here.
I'm here.
Michael Stammel. Jackie Stallone. Saratoga County, congratulations, you have 100% attendance today. Joe Grasso.
Morning, Mark.
Opal Hinz. Jason Kemper. Amy Standard.
Here.
And Craig Warner.
Here.
Jason did mention he's working on his audio, but he is present at the meeting. Skeptically County, Don Ackerman. David Hogan Camp.
I'm here.
Gary Hughes.
Present.
Joel Landry. Barbara Morrow.
Present.
All right, with that, we have a quorum. We can proceed with the meeting. I'll ask Kristen Swinton to call the meeting to order.
Hey, I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on our agenda, I need a motion to accept the May 20th, 2020 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then they're accepted. Mark, financial statements?
Great. Thank you, Kristen. March financial statements. The biannual and third quarter invoices have been sent to the counties. Albany and Rensselaer Counties are paid semiannually twice a year and Saratoga and Skeptically are billed quarterly. We're still in the process of finalizing the quarter two billings to our granting agencies. So the amounts that you see reflected in the financial statements are still estimates. We're still in the process of finalizing what those receivables are, but they're within the range of what they ultimately will be. As of, it says July 1st in your, in your memo, it's actually as of June 30th. Revenues are at 51.37%, expenses are at 50%, par is, par is 50%. So we're right where we need to be in terms of revenue and expenses for the year. We had $123,000 cash on hand in the bank. And we have total receivables of just under $300,000. So again, you know, we monitor this time of year and throughout the year, our cash flow. And with $123,000 in the bank, you know, we're relatively stable with cash flow. I did have a conversation with our treasurer, Joel Landry, about state agencies not reimbursing grant, granting agencies that have grants like CDRPC. We do have a significant amount or a fair amount of receivables from state granting agencies, including the DEC and the DOT. We're going to continue to monitor the situation, but again, with almost $300,000 in receivables, I anticipate that we'll be getting some payments from some of our granting agencies that are not impacted by the current state spending slowdown. If it becomes an issue, we'll, you know, address that, you know, but if we get down under $80,000 in cash on hand, that's going to be sort of mission critical and we'll need to figure out some, some steps to take to recoup some of our, our money. Some of the accounts receivable that are reflected in that $300,000 are payments made by organizations that CDRPC administers. So payments due to us from the CSO Corporation or the youth detention facility. And so those are things that can, you know, generate, you know, a fair amount of revenue by just doing some administrative transactions on our end. Any questions on the financial statements?
I think we have a motion to approve the financial statement.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Then they're approved. Next is the audit update.
So we are still in the, the process of doing the audit. Historically, we, we just have a couple of members joining the call right now. Mike Stammel and Jason Kemper just joined. Welcome. Historically, the, at the July board meeting, we present the final audit for acceptance by the board. We have been a bit delayed. As you know, we have a part-time accountant. Our part-time accountant also works for a nonprofit organization. And a lot of his time over the past quarter, quarter two, was consumed by the nonprofit dealing with their PPE grant applications and all sorts of other things. So getting the answers that we needed for our auditors was a bit delayed. So we're wrapping up some of the final questions that our auditors have for, for presentation to the board, which I anticipate will happen in October. We're not seeing any, any red flags. There were some financial hiccups created by transitioning from QuickBooks Online to QuickBooks Enterprise in terms of some adjusted journal entries not being reflected in the opening balances in 2019, but amounts that are not, you know, on the whole significant, less than $5,000. But just wanted to give you that update and explain why you're not seeing the audit for acceptance at the July meeting.
Okay, next is the reopening safety plan.
Right, the reopening safety plan, this plan has been in effect since the capital region opened phase four, so the middle of June. It was reviewed by staff and it's the policy that we've been operating under since the office became open in the middle of June. At this point, we have about half the staff coming into the office on a regular basis. Working with staff, we've developed a strategy that we'll implement next week whereby all staff will be coming into the office at least two days a week on, on schedules that, you know, permit social distancing and comply with the policies that is outlined in the reopening safety plan. So since it is a policy and a safety plan, I just wanted the board to take action on it to approve it. Just so we have consensus and, and the board as a, you know, as the administrative entity approves the, the opening safety plan.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the COVID-19 reopening safety plan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question. I have a question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, just real quickly. So we have the plan. When are you going to review it to make full staff available? Is it going to be looked at on a, on a weekly basis, monthly basis? Are we going to wait for the state to say something? When will it be effective that, that everybody should be returned to work?
Well, I think the plan really addresses how to return to work safely. There's another question, you know, that I think a lot of businesses have to address in that, you know, when are, when are we going to be back to normal? And I don't think any of us have the answer, when are we going to be back to normal? The other question is, how has the pandemic sort of changed the way that people feel comfortable working? And I know particularly for a number of our staff, who, some of which who have, you know, had some relationships and approved relationships with us, working remotely for certain days a week. How is that expectation, you know, changing and evolving? And I think we as an organization, similar to other organizations, you know, need to make that assessment in terms of a macro policy on, you know, what we, what we think about remote work and how that's going to be part of the new normal after we come out of the pandemic situation. So right now, the opening safety plan that the board is reviewing now is really just how we can comply with the, with the regulations that are out there for business operations. The other question that we as a board need to think about is how we further refine our policies on remote work after we come out of the pandemic. You know, for those staff that want to work remotely more, more frequently than they have historically. You know, we've made investments and thankfully the board, you know, made some investments in, you know, the, the server and other technology that allowed us to work remotely prior to the pandemic. And thankfully so, because that allowed us to transition seamlessly into, you know, the, the new work environment here. So the question is really a policy question that's going to take a longer conversation among the board is, you know, what do we do with our administrative guidelines to further refine or change the expectation about remote work for staff at CDRPC?
Can you hear?
I hear you. I hear perfectly.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the only reason why I asked this is obviously most municipalities have gone back to work fully in the capital region anyway, and I think there's something to be said about working together in an office. Understanding that, obviously, there's times when you should be using a mask or not using a mask and things of that nature. But there's something to say about the interaction of an office staff other than just being alone, working at home all the time as well. So, you know, I'm just just kind of pro being together and working together to some degree. And I just think that we need to look at it a little bit more as getting back to normal rather than, I mean, when we put the policy together to work at home, it was to assist us when they needed to go to meetings outside, outside of the office and things of that nature, not to turn it into a, pretty much a, a full-time stay at home and just check in at the office when you're online. And I just, I just think that we're spending, and I said this to you at our last meeting, is that we're spending an awful lot of money for office, for that office space, and I just wanted to see utilized safely, but as often as possible.
Right, we want this, you know, office to be, and it always has been a point for coordination and collaboration, particularly other agencies around the region. We bring them together in our conference room and that's, you know, a critical function of our office that we currently can't, can't utilize, you know, to its maximum extent possible. You know, I think, you know, as we emerge from this, there's definitely, and I appreciate being in the office and seeing people in person. I think it's, for me, it's more efficient. I also appreciate being out of my house and not having to deal with the rugrats running around and being able to focus on work. But again, you know, that's another layer that we have to consider is the flexibility coming out of the pandemic with childcare and opening and reopening of schools and how that's going to impact people with children. Like myself, you know, I, I still have to, you know, work remotely some days as a function of my role as a parent to my children and other staff have those responsibilities as well. So, you know, I don't have an answer for you, Mike. My preference is to get back to normal as quickly as possible. But I think we have to, you know, consider, you know, the flexibility of our staff as, as I think you recognize and others recognize. And also, you know, people's comfort level of being in the office. We have an office and a variety of our services, you know, we provide remotely or we go out into the region. So I think, you know, we're on a pathway to get us there. You know, we're getting people back into the office in a way that's going to maintain, you know, safety in our office and comply with our plan. But we do, I think, as an organization, need to take a look at, you know, our expectations for remote work moving forward in a way that's not necessarily divorced from the current crisis, but informed by the current crisis.
Okay, further discussion I'm sure we'll have, but thank you for that. I'm okay.
Okay, we already have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the reopening safety plan?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then it's approved. Next is the ADA CARES Act grant.
So the CDRPC is a designated, designated economic development district for Albany, Rensselaer, Saratoga and Skeptically Counties for the purposes of the Economic Development Administration at the federal level. As part of the CARES Act, economic development districts were allocated $400,000 of non-competitive match-free funding for work to support the recovery effort. Over the past couple of months, month and a half or so, we've reached out to stakeholders in economic development organizations around the region to help inform how we would invest that $400,000 in a way that would have the biggest impact. And so we've, we've dialed, at our last meeting, I asked you to approve or authorize us to apply for the non-competitive grant money. And this meeting, I'm asking you to accept it. The last meeting, I did not have a final scope of what that grant project was going to look like because we were still in the process of communicating with our stakeholders. And now I think we have a more refined scope of what the project will be. The project will include $200,000 in mini-grants to support economic development organizations around the region and their work on the recovery. Minimal amount for supplies. We've allocated a certain amount for a recovery and resiliency plan. However, as I mentioned in the last call, you know, we're not the only organization that does regional economic development. So we're going to be looking for guidance and, and we're certainly going to be in communication with what other organizations are doing, particularly the Regional Economic Development Council and whether or not they are going to be tasked with a sort of regional recovery plan. We have a portion that's allocated to develop a data dashboard to track the recovery and we anticipate that these are going to be some additional investments in either securing data or visualizing data to help economic development agencies and governments understand the impact and sort of measure, hopefully in real time, what the recovery looks like. And an allocated amount for personal service and fringe and overhead for CDRPC staff. It's, it's a continuing conversation with our partners. I think David Hogan Camp, I think, gave us a good piece of advice, which I think were, was guiding our approach to this funding is that we're still in the, in the crisis mode and still really early in the recovery, if we can call it that. So trying to be as flexible as possible and continuing to listen to the needs of economic development organizations is really going to be how we approach distributing the, the mini-grants and providing additional technical assistance through staff for the recovery to those organizations. So a motion is requested by, by the board to accept the $400,000 in EDA grant funding.
Hey, Mark.
So moved.
I'll second it and I appreciate Kate's time and, you know, reviewing the program and I think we're on the right track here. So thank you to the staff.
Hey, Mark.
With their question?
Yeah, this is Joe Grasso. Mark.
That's the pitch outside signing. You got them to take them back in, all right?
Okay.
Sound good.
So, Mark, in the memo, you, you know, you say that we're role mapped to distribute the one and a half billion. What does that mean, role mapped? And I mean, we're not actually in charge of the one and a half billion, right? We're, we're only distributing a portion of that?
Yes, that's correct. Sorry for my, my poor choice of wording in that sentence. Thankfully, we're not role mapped and distributing the 1.5.
So what's our, you know, so, so what is the amount? Is it the 259 million?
That's allocated to the Northeast region. So to paint a picture of, of the impact of the CARES Act funding for the region, for our four county region, CDRPC is getting 400,000. The Capital Region Chamber, in partnership with CDRPC, has an application for, to create a $10 million revolving loan fund. That's going to expand the existing revolving loan fund from Albany County to include Saratoga, Skeptically, Rensselaer Counties. In addition, University of Albany is a university center. I know they're teed up to receive some non-competitive funding in their business school for, I think, emergency preparedness and resiliency. So that's sort of how that 259,000 that's allocated to the Northeast is going to be impacting this region. And our 400,000 is just a small part of that.
Okay, and, and the agencies that were the economic development stakeholders? Who are the, do we have a list of who those agencies are?
I spoke with leadership in the counties and Kate has been speaking with organizations like Metroplex, Capitalized Albany Corporation, Rensselaer County Chamber, Saratoga County Prosperity Partnership, SCDC. Just making sure we're hitting all the organizations that work in this space. You know, the observation is it's only $400,000, you know, but we're trying to maximize how that can benefit those organizations that are in the trenches with the relationships that are doing this work. So we wanted to make sure that they were guiding what we were doing with that money. We're going to continue to have those conversations with them.
I'm good. Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the CARES Act grant?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Then it's accepted. Next is 2020 budget amendment.
Okay, this budget amendment is primarily made to reflect the increased revenue of the CARES Act funding. Now, the CARES Act funding is $400,000 over the course of the next two years. Our goal is to particularly get the grant money out to the communities as quickly as possible, which is why while our grant term begins July 1st, 2020, it extends to June 30th, 2022. I am anticipating distributing nearly half of the money in this, the rest of this calendar year, hopefully if, if things work out appropriately. So that, our budget reflects that. It reflects distributing, getting the additional revenue from the EDA. The expenses on the salary line increased to reflect promoting our part-time assistant planner to a full-time planner position. The temporary services line is reduced to reflect not having a summer intern. The EDA CARES Act grant line is a new line to reflect $100,000 grant program for this, the remainder of this calendar year. And FICA workers' comp and health and unemployment lines are also adjusted to reflect, reflect a full-time staffer. In addition, I made a mistake during the May budget update. I did not update the FICA line to reflect the additional staff costs for our CCECP outreach coordinators. So the total correction is reflected in the FICA line in this amended budget.
Are there any questions? And could I have a motion to approve the 2020 budget amendment?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Who's second?
David.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the 2021 preliminary budget.
So this is the preliminary budget we presented at the July board meeting. We, after the board approves the preliminary budget, we distribute the preliminary budget with our budget request to the counties. After the July meeting, we recognize it's going to be an extremely challenging year for the counties in their budget process. So we are, you know, looking to make sure that we're communicating CDRPC's need and the value that we generate for the counties and the communities therein. Overall, our 2021 budget proposal is 23% more than the 2020 budget. And again, this reflects receiving grant awards for the new term for the Clean Energy Communities Program and additional revenues from the EDA Economic Development Administration. While the board did agree to submit an increased request to the counties last year, I believe a 2% increased request. The counties did not act on that. So the total county request this year is the same as it has been since 2004 of 200, just over $205,000. I'm not anticipating any change to that request. It's going to be the same as it has been for the last 16 years. Again, one thing I try to, I will stress to the county budget request is that every dollar that the counties contribute to CDRPC is leveraged by four and a half dollars of outside revenue and grants that we use to fund our programs that benefit the counties and the communities within them. The contractual service line reflects some school enrollment projections. I'm anticipating a reduced amount for school enrollment projections as school districts are also faced with a difficult as school districts are also faced with a difficult budget year. So we may lose some of our contracted schools and that. And that contractual service revenue line reflects that. As I mentioned, the NACERTA line reflects receiving the grant application that was submitted back in June or July. We anticipate hearing about that, I believe, in the next couple of weeks. The CSO revenue line is reduced slightly. Our work to administer the CSO program has been steady. Next year, we're approaching the largest capital project in the 15-year plan, the Beaver Creek Clean River Project, a $45 million project in Albany that will have tremendous beneficial impact to water quality in the Hudson River. But, you know, overall, our role will be, I anticipate over the next couple of years, be on a steady sort of decline in that program a little bit as projects, as the number of projects that we help with gets less and less. Of note, CDRPC, and this is another action item on this agenda, did receive a grant in 2020. Martin applied for a grant that will cover 90% of the cost for CDRPC's administrative services to the communities. So all the communities that pay CDRPC to administer that program now get 90% of their costs covered as a result of the grant that Martin put together to cover those costs.
Mark, if I could, just to one point of clarification, that grant covers our staff time and fringe, but the overhead portions of the cost are not covered by the grant. So we were able to negotiate with Department of State to backfill that portion of our grant application with work from the technical service providers on that program. So the whole communities will still pay, unfortunately, still pay full freight on overhead, but for fringe and staff time will be reimbursed 90%. And for some of our consultant expenses will be reimbursed 90%.
Thank you for that further explanation, Martin. EDA again reflects the increased revenue from the CARES Act funding, water quality. This is the second full year of our four-year contract term. We're working aggressively in source water protection. And we've been asked to do more with less money. We anticipate receiving $50,000 in 2021 calendar year. UPWP is dialed down slightly. We have a solid working relationship with them. However, the number that is included in the budget reflects projected actuals for 2021 and reflects some shifts of our, you know, charging our staff time from that grant to the EDA CARES Act funding. On the expense side, salaries include funding for professional staff of eight plus one part-time accountant, consultant services. Again, we're going to continue to invest in our regional data dashboard, which is funded through the Capital Region Chamber, the Community Foundation, and CTC. We have some, we have some money in there also for marketing for the Clean Heating and Cooling Program, computer supplies and software. What that pays for is in your memo. We don't anticipate an increase in rent. Travel is increased to reflect the travel of the Clean Energy Communities Program in 2021, anticipating that they're going to be able to go out to the communities and actually meet with people and travel around. So that's what that increase is all about. Health insurance is increased to reflect that one additional full-time staff and it assumes a 2% overall increase in health insurance costs. So any questions on the proposed 2021 budget?
No, if there's no questions, can I have a motion to approve the 2021 preliminary budget?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Then the budget is approved. Next is strategic plan update.
So at our last meeting, we presented the committee's recommendation for updates to the strategic plan initiatives. After a number of meetings, the committee decided not to do a full-blown new strategic plan and just update the strategic initiatives that the plan defined. So they were put out there for comment to the board. And they're presented here for adoption as the new strategic initiatives. This would be an update to the 2015 plan. These new strategic initiatives would be included as an update and an amendment to the 2015 plan to reflect the 2020 strategic initiatives. We still need to go back and do some action items associated with these initiatives. However, these are, you know, I think the core main pillars of the direction as an organization that the committee is suggesting that we take. Again, the first two really resonate heavily with existing strategic initiatives that were identified in the 2015 plan. Enhanced communication and outreach is the first one. And continue to seek opportunities for facilitation and project management. And I think that speaks very much to CDRPC's entrepreneurial role in the region and bringing together partners. The last two, the third one is work to develop a regional conversation about growth and development patterns. And that's one that, you know, we've already started on. I had a conversation with Mike Francini at CTC and he agreed to provide some funding in this state fiscal year to begin CDRPC's work in communicating and coordinating that conversation in the region. And number four, identify ways to increase financial stability consistent with the mission of the commission in concert with the goals and objectives of the member counties. And again, this, you know, this is important because we are still very much at the whims of our county funding, providing our core match and grant funding, which provides the bulk of the other funding that we receive. So as an organization, you know, we're still very heavily reliant on those two things. And so this is intended to help us think about ways we can increase financial stability, you know, without being so heavily reliant on the county funding and our grant funding. So it's presented here for board approval.
Are there any questions? If not, could I have a motion to approve the strategic plan update?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Lucy said.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? And it's approved. Next is the DOS grant for the CSO administration.
When we updated the 2020 budget, or when we were reviewing the proposed preliminary budget, I did mention this. So as I mentioned, things coming out of the state, including grant awards and contracts, are relatively slow. We did receive this grant award memo. We have not been able to execute a contract yet. The board authorized us to apply for this grant. This action of the board is simply accepting the grant. The grant does include a 10% match, but as Martin, I think, articulated, the CSO communities through a subsequent agreement are on the hook to cover the matching portion of this grant fund. So it's presented here for board action to accept the grant from DOS.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept the DOS grant for CSO administration?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And it's accepted. Next is the appointment of a planner.
So with the advent of the CARES Act funding, we're in a better position to promote our part-time assistant planner, Josh Tossi, to a full-time planner position. Mr. Tossi has outlined in the email, has been working with us since 2008 versus a graduate student intern when he was getting his degree from Rockefeller College. We converted that position to assistant planner position. Josh has really grown into the role of assistant planner and has been, we've been increasingly giving him more and more responsibility. And now his portfolio of works includes our school enrollment projections, data requests, doing all the demographic and other analysis related to our community planning and technical assistance programs. He develops and maintains our data visualizations on the website. He's responsible for putting together our e-newsletters, our data newsletter and our general newsletter. And because he's under 30, he's also responsible for our social media, large. So this action is presented here because our administrative guidelines require that the board approve all appointments to full-time salaried positions. This position is a promotion from an assistant planner to a full-time planner position. But again, it's presented here as appropriate under our administrative guidelines for board approval.
Okay, so could we have a motion to appoint Josh to a full-time planner?
I have a question. I have a question first, Mark. I'm looking and, you know, I'm glad you're keeping the salaries low, but isn't that a bit low for a planner?
Well.
Don't put him on the spot. We don't want, you don't want to lose him, is what I'm saying.
Well, we don't want to lose Josh. You know, that is the starting salary. Having somewhat familiarity with starting salaries of planners around the region and, you know, having, well, so as the president of the New York Upstate Chapter of the American Planning Association and also the webmaster, I frequently seeing job solicitations for starting planners across upstate New York. And I feel very confident that that salary level is on par with other or competitive with other starting salary levels for planners in upstate New York.
Okay, I'm just looking at his duty, work duties. I thought, looks like he's doing a lot. You certainly don't want to lose him. But if he's comfortable and you're comfortable, that's fine.
Yes, Josh did accept the position at $46,000.
Okay.
We have a motion to appoint Josh?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Lucy said. Aye.
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 Then Josh is appointed. Next is the annual report.
All right, annual report. This is the third annual report that's been developed and presented in this fashion. It's really intended to be a communication tool to our stakeholders and primarily our county funders to show them and to answer the question, what have you done for me lately? So in addition to this annual report, which will be distributed to the county legislatures in a digital form, I've also developed a one-pager that further refines the specific benefit that CDRPC is providing each county. And I'm hoping our board members can carry the water and use the annual report and the one-pager to help communicate the benefit of CDRPC to your contacts in the county legislatures or otherwise. Obviously, I'm always available to talk on a Zoom call or to participate in any county legislative convening to talk about the benefits of CDRPC to the counties. I'll be distributing the final annual report to you all, along with the one-pagers for the county impact. But it's presented to you here for your information and I just wanted to give you an update on how I'm intending to distribute the annual report.
Are there any questions? Okay, then next is a presentation by Todd.
All right, well, we do a lot of work that doesn't normally get a lot of attention, but we are lucky in CDRPC to have one of the area's foremost experts on geographic information systems. And geographic information systems, as many of you know, are more than just maps. It's really a tool to analyze and understand a variety of factors and then visualize the results in a map form. So Todd has been working on a variety of maps, in a variety of topic areas, and has been developing really some innovative approaches to getting a better understanding of a variety of topics. And Todd is here to provide a 15-minute presentation on some of his work in mapping and GIS for CDRPC. And Todd, let me know if I need to do anything to allow you to share your screen.
Okay, I'll try to share it now. Are you able to see that?
It's coming through slowly and surely.
Yeah, it seems like my connection at the wrong time is slowing down. Okay, is the presentation up?
No.
I don't see it.
There it is.
Okay. Like my wonderful internet connection is slowing down right at the wrong time, but I will, hopefully I'll be able to navigate this. I wanted to give an overview, a quick overview, and I'm going to fly through a lot of this stuff because there's a lot that's been accomplished over the last, well, for me, it's been 24 years. So I was first hired at CDRPC 24 years ago and one of my first tasks was to develop a GIS system. And so I want to just go over some of what's been done and then some of what we're working on right now. So what is GIS, Geographic Information System? Of course, GIS is the acronym for that. It's a computer-based system to aid in the collection, maintenance, storage, analysis, output and distribution of spatial data and attributes. So what does that all mean? I guess in a simplistic way, what it means is that it's a lot more than just maps and it's a way to develop new information from spatial relationships and to basically be able to understand the integration of map data with tabular data and to be able to do analysis in both ways. So for example, we work with themes or layers. This layer that's shown here is a parcel layer. And then we have attributes, in other words, all of the information about each of those parcels. And this is just one example. So we can query this information. I can look up parcels based on, show me all the single-family homes, for example. Show me the single-family homes that were built within a certain period of time. Show me all of the commercial properties, et cetera. So there's all kinds of ways we can work to manipulate this data that goes beyond mapping. So we work in a coordinate system, which allows us to be able to have a whole series of different representations of phenomena, whatever it might be, roads and municipal boundaries and environmental data. And it's all tied to a coordinate system so that when we overlay that information, we layer that information, it shows up in the right place. And then we can do these kinds of spatial analyses. So we work with vector format data and raster format data primarily, which means we represent the real world in points, lines, polygons, or in certain instances, we represent it in a grid, like a photograph. So just a quick background, some probably no one knows some of this stuff right now since some of the stuff happened a long time ago at CDRPC. But we were actually the first beta test site for MAP Info. So in the early 1990s, we became a test site for what was, for a while, the second-largest GIS software package out there. It was since bought up by another company and is not as competitive now then. When I was brought on, we had Atlas GIS, which was bought up and went away. We started to use IDRI to be able to do raster analysis. And then we started using ESRI products, which we've used ever since. And so we have been using a variety of those products. When I first started using ArcInfo products, this was something that was done on a unit's workstation. It was something done with command line prompts. You had to memorize all the commands. There was no graphic user interface. And so it's evolved quite a bit over the years and it's, in fact, much more prominent now in different organizations and in different municipalities. When in 1997, when I started building this system, nobody in the region was using this. And so we had to start to look at all the different things that we would do. First, what kind of data sets are out there? We're in a time in which all these data sets, and this is just a sampling, are available in a digital format. Back then, they were not. I had to create them from paper maps. I had to essentially trace things with a digitizer, had to be able to go through a long tedious process when we use these. And we use these for all of our projects, for example, watershed planning and things like that, which I was also involved with at that same time. And I would sit and have to trace all the USGS maps to be able to actually have data to use. But that's evolved. And so we have, we started out creating a mechanism to work with the counties and helping the counties. And I've helped the counties throughout the years to teach them to share data. We've had really good synergy between our programs and also then the municipalities as they started to get used to this. But around that time when we're developing a regional project to be able to share data, the state started to think about the same thing. And so I got involved and was asked to be part of the New York State GIS coordinating body and served on that for nine years in which we developed policies for data sharing across the whole entire state. And now we have a mechanism in which you can go online and you can basically get access to all kinds of data now in a digital format. So it's been a very efficient way to be able to promulgate GIS use by making data available for others to use. So I just want to touch on some of the projects and applications. I'm going to whip through these because I, you know, we, so one of the first things after building this system was to show one of the first things after building this system was to show it off by creating the first regional digital atlas. So this was back in 1999 that we published the atlas and and we got funding from Coho Savings Bank to pay for it. Gave us $15,000 back end to be able to work with a company out of Malta. That was the first digital printing company. And and at first, before we got that money, I was printing these out on an inkjet printer and hand punching them and and but we ended up developing this atlas as a starting point. Then over the years, updating this information, putting it on our website, and we just did a big up. So I just did a whole new update of that. There's over 50 new maps now on the website of of the newest iteration of this atlas. And one of the things about this atlas and this image really represents the idea here is it's really about regional understanding and a regional vision. And so this particular satellite image, I particularly like because it doesn't show municipal boundaries. It shows just the the footprint of the region as it as it works amongst itself, and it's not about necessarily jurisdictions. Of course, those matter in the end of things, but the idea is, how do we show a picture of regional patterns that you can't find anywhere else? And so we've been doing this now for, like I said, for almost 25 years. And 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 these are the kinds of images that that aren't available any anyplace else, regardless of whether there's now a lot of online mapping systems. They don't show it in this fashion. And the and the job of these, of course, is 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 a few things. To teach about the region and understand the patterns, to be able to use these digital images then in in grant applications, in presentations, in reports. We provide a lot of this information to CDTC, who helps fund this and have funded this through the UPWP program. So we've created these different pictures of the the patterns and relationships between municipalities. And I'm not going to go through the whole atlas, but we've got census data, we've got building permit information. And this is the original atlas, satellite information. Then one of the next projects I did, and this was around 2000, was to take satellite information and do a change analysis between points of time. And we did an 11-year analysis because so it was two two points in time over 11-year span and showed where the new development was going. And then where it was able to go out and then take pictures to be able to refine this into land use and to be able to understand development throughout the region and how it's taken place over time. And this turned into, for me, a dog and pony show that went on for over a decade. And I did over 200 presentations all across the region, different settings, to to talk about the findings of this and and what how we were growing as a region. And so this is just an example of how to show this over time in 10-year increments. And this is just single-family homes where I can show these patterns of each of these little dots is a single-family home built in a 10-year span. And you can see how from basically 1945 to the to the present, how much we've we've developed and in some ways, how much we've spread out and sprawled. So we recently, and this was only a couple of years ago, then updated this with these orange areas, which are the parcels of single-family homes in a 20-year snapshot. And we created growth profiles for each of the communities and the counties based on these. And then we looked at actual sidewalk use just as one element of of comparing sidewalks, which are those purple lines, to the new development to see the relationship between how we're growing and how we're providing the the amenities for pedestrians. And and finding when we look at this that there's a lot of shortcomings in where we're developing basically omitting sidewalks and creating patterns where they're they're very auto dependent dependent patterns. So this is an example of one of the pages of their four-page profiles. You can find them on the website for every community that shows the the development during that 20-year period, shows where new roads were built, whether they had sidewalks or not. There's a land use map and some other demographic information for each of the communities that you can download in a report. So we've done a lot of analysis for CDTC over the years as an example of and a lot of times you see these maps and you think, well, what is this? It's just this simple-looking map. And it was all kinds of analysis that went into this to be able to take population projections to distribute them on the landscape based on environmental constraints and the and the projections that we had based on population growth, to be able to model different scenarios for CDTC under high-growth scenarios. This is a status quo scenario or a high-growth scenario. And this was preparation back when the chip fab plant was first being planned. And there was a lot of talk about how we were going to grow and needed to to visualize this for the transportation plan. So we've done a lot of things with CDTC over the years. And that all kinds of different data requests, these are just samples where, you know, historic Troy, we we just need a map for a grant application. And and here's a the the metroplex needed an analysis of the population within a certain area of Schenectady or another one within a population of 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 an exit of the thruway and and looking at the number of people that fall within these areas and have had lots of requests over the years. IDAs and others have asked for that kind of analysis. This is an example of a map of the of the colleges in the region, and this went into a report the Chamber of Commerce put together and distributed. This is an example of analysis for the Bethlehem IDA for a site they were looking to develop. This is a map for the Hudson Mohawk RCND, and this was part of an Almanac that they developed. This is a map for, it used to be the Mohawk Valley Heritage Corridor Commission, and this was one of their programs. And this is a flyer that they put together showing their area. I don't believe they exist any longer. This is an is there, excuse me, this is a map of the scenic byway proposal that's now in in place. This went into the Mohawk towpath byway. So it worked with the towpath group to develop this map that then was submitted and then was approved and as part of this whole byway application. Now it is a scenic byway in in a southern Saratoga County. This is school district work that I've done with work with different school districts and showing the school districts. This is a project that we worked with the Schenectady School District, a very interesting project in which they had acquired a new building and wanted to carve out a new attendance zone for a school. So we geocoded all of the students, where they live, to be able to do an analysis of the number of students then that we would be able to allocate to this building, knowing how many students would fit in that building, and also analyzing the students that go to the existing zones to be able to then carve out a new zone, which we developed. And we did this on contract with the Schenectady School District. So it was, and then we updated this a couple of years later. We did a project, I did a project for the United Way in Schenectady. This is just one sample of a whole series of maps that they were the and and analysis that they were looking at for the city of Schenectady. This is a map for M&amp;T Bank that we that I had done for low and moderate income areas and based on their lending policies. This is an analysis and this is just, really, it was the the numbers that went into this. I did a whole series of analyses for the Albany Airport on how many people lived within a certain distance of the airport. And we did a bunch of zoning maps and other maps for the Albany Airport and flyover areas and areas of conflict with properties that they were purchasing. And we've done a variety of land use maps for communities. This is the town of Charleston, Charlton, but there was been a number of these. We're working on a technical assistance project right now with the town of Westerlow. This is just one example. This is steep slopes and there's a whole series of maps that I just developed over the last couple of weeks and for the technical assistance project for Westerlow. This is a really sophisticated analysis that that looks really simplistic when you look at it here. But we've done this for a number of communities with solar analysis, where I've been able to develop a raster model where we integrate a whole series of characteristics, where the three-phase lines are, where the where areas are south-facing, where they're on not on steep slopes, not on wetlands, not on streams, and not on primag soils to develop a solar model of where community solar may go. So so this is another service we've been developing for communities trying to work on 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 solar. This is a a map and and an analysis I'm working on with Cook and Park right now to be able to develop the growth that's taking place in their GEIS area to show that growth and analyze that growth. Another technical assistance project we're involved with right now. We've done a whole series of water quality projects. The other thing, too, is we've developed data sets, not always just the maps, but data. So this is an example of developing data for the Petrun Creek that I developed and gave to utilize in their own GIS system they were developing for the for, I'm forgetting the name of the organization, in the Hayward Burns Environmental Center in in Albany. And we developed a whole series of data sets for City of Albany for the Alcove Reservoir. I developed a whole series of data sets for Albany, Schenectady and Rensselaer Counties for a tenant program in which the social services departments were then using a GIS model that that we developed. And they were looking up information for their clients when they would come in and they would be able to know the distance to where the nearest daycare center is, where the nearest job training center is, where the nearest bus stop is. So a lot of times, just developing these data sets for others to use. This is in Rensselaer County, just some analysis we did for the Mill Creek area. And we've done a lot of watershed planning in which we always would put these together. So this was a a plan I I had written years ago that we're now updating for the Water Gleet Reservoir. And I've been developing new maps for that for Martin. This is just a sample of one. Here's another sample of the of the new updated maps for that. We've done a lot with transit planning. We and then we did this on contract with CDTA. So I've done a whole series of maps for their transit plan. And this led to then developing new bus routes for the region. And and so this is just an example of developing the new bus routes, and we worked with CDTA on this. And also something called the Transit Propensity Index, where we evaluated a whole series of census characteristics and traffic generators like hospitals and shopping centers and then developed an area the areas where they would be coded them and and ranked them based on their propensity for transit. This is another analysis with transit where I geocoded all of the employees for Albany College of Pharmacy, St. Rhodes, Sage, Albany Medical College and the University at Albany, to be able to see where all the employees lived in relation to where they work and develop transit for potential transit opportunities for these employees. We did a transit analysis for services for disabled populations where we where I did a transit zone analysis where they charge different rates for these areas. And then lastly, sorry, I've just whipped through all of that. We have now the new update to the atlas. And and so now we have all these new maps that are that are online tonight. And if anyone's interested at some point in in dissecting these and having a conversation about, what are these maps really telling us, right? And we we look at 50 years of change and 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 we see the population loss in the cities and the growth in the suburbs. I think a lot of these maps, if if not the majority of them, really lend themselves to a regional discussion about about growth, building permits, where development's happening, comparisons of income, the comparisons of where the minority population lives, where the immigrant population is. I mean, some of this stuff is really fascinating when you get underneath it. Here's over the over the course of the last eight years, 17,000 residents did not live in the country prior to 2010. Well, we didn't, well, that's about the number of new population we have in this region during that period. So basically, without immigration, we would not even be growing as a region, even though we're we're barely growing, but immigration is the only reason. Vacant housing and the concentration of that in the urban area suggests a number of things to think about. Where the educated population is and the and the bachelor's degree is, where we commute from and those inter-county commuters and where they go. And and housing values, these are just some quick samples of the region and what we show, environmental characteristics, lastly. So this is, and we have a whole series of these on different wetlands and soils and things like that. So I know that's a quick whip through, but hopefully just a, you know, a little bit of a sampling of of the GIS system at CDRPC.
So so if you are interested in particularly the atlas, it's on our website. I believe it's cdrc.org/atlas. And that brings you to the new update, including the 50 or so maps that Todd has updated and included in this in this atlas. I think this, the GIS program and Todd's capabilities to do analysis and GIS is a is a good, is a, you know, significant piece of the type of technical assistance services that we can provide at CDRPC. We are, you know, we're available through the technical assistance program and and other programs to provide some of these services. So if you have a project idea that relates to this, you know, obviously, feel free to reach out to me and we can start the conversation about, you know, whether we have capacity, whether it fits into one of our programs and 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 how we can how we can help advance the project. So thank you very much, Todd, for giving us that overview.
Okay, does anyone else have any other business for the board? Then our next commission meeting date is October 21st at 10:00 a.m. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everybody.
Great to see everyone. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Bye.
Bye.